Good evening. I'll call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please remain standing. With us today for our invocation is Dr. Bobby Brewer, Pastor of North Chapel Church.
All right, let's pray. Lord, we just want to say thank you, Lord, for the goodness and the freedoms we have to live in the United States and to live in Fountain Hills on top of it, Lord. What a blessing. And we thank you for this time of year where we just express our gratitude more than normal. And we just want to say thank you for your goodness. And, Lord, thank you for our town council. I thank you for Mayor Kavanaugh and each person serving, the sacrifices they have made to their family and friends and businesses to lead this town and to give us guidance. And I pray that you let them finish strong and give them wisdom on how to guide this town and to guide us on paths of blessings, paths of righteousness for your name's sake, and just paths of wisdom as well. I pray that you bless them even more as spouses and as parents and grandparents, Lord. I pray that they can enjoy this season and refresh their spirits. And we pray you bless now this council. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Now can we get a roll call, Nancy?
Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Councilmember Leger.
Here.
Councilmember Tolles. Councilmember Brown is not attending. Councilmember Yates.
Present.
Vice Mayor Magazine.
Here.
Councilmember DePorter.
Here.
Okay, we'll start up with our proclamation. And this is for Small Business Saturday in the town of Fountain Hills. Whereas the government of Fountain Hills, Arizona, celebrates our local small businesses and contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 28.8 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of all businesses with employees in the United States, are responsible for 63% of net new jobs created over the past 20 years. And whereas small businesses employ 48% of the employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas, on average, 33% of consumers' holiday shopping will be done at small, independently-owned retailers and restaurants. And whereas 91% of all consumers believe that supporting small, independently-owned restaurants and bars is important. And whereas 76% of all consumers plan to go to one or more small businesses as part of their holiday shopping. And whereas Fountain Hills, Arizona, supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Lynda M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the town of Fountain Hills, Arizona, do hereby proclaim November 25, 2017, as Small Business Saturday in the town of Fountain Hills, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Thanks. And now we have gone to economic development. Is Councilman Tolles with us? Did he just click on?
Hello, here's him.
You're with us, okay.
I don't know.
Did you have a coalition report or will you be doing that next meeting?
Next meeting.
Next meeting, okay. All right, so let me go on to my EDC report. Our MAGEDC meeting focused on tourism and the impact of tourism on our state and local municipalities. The ACA, which is the Arizona Commerce Authority, reported that between 2013 and 2017, they have exceeded their goal of capital investment, of moving businesses here from other states. And in the five-year span, jobs and indirect jobs have had a $3 billion economic impact on the state. There was a lot of discussion about the governor's push for the ACA to do more of an increase in tourism. And while tourism is important to our state and our local economies, I stressed at this meeting that they also need to assess some of the negative impacts that increased tourism is having on our local residents. For instance, the infrastructure in the state does not support the heavy increase in traffic, so our rush hours are sometimes a nightmare for residents during the peak tourism season. They did acknowledge that recently they started to discuss this very topic after hearing from Sedona and other major tourist areas concerned about the future of increased tourism on their residents. No matter how much we want and need tourists for our state and local municipalities, we must balance that with the needs of our year-round residents. Second, on my EDC report, the town council had a joint meeting with Fort McDowell Tribal Council where we discussed mutual issues of fire, police, education, tourism, and infrastructure. It was a very productive meeting, finding out in the end what we all knew, that we have so much to gain from combined economic development and tourism. And the smaller issues are usually taken care of with improved communication. Our staff was present, and they got to connect with their counterparts at the fort, which will go a long way to keeping the doors of communication open in the future. I personally have been working with Fort McDowell Nation for over 20 years, first as partners with the River of Time Museum, and then as a member and chair of the Chamber of Commerce. We accomplished a lot at this first meeting, and I look forward to continuing this great friendship we have with our neighbors. And the next joint meeting will take place in Fountain Hills about six months from now. So I know some of the council was also there at the meeting. Does anyone have comments about our joint meeting? Go ahead, Councilman DePorter.
Thank you. I would just echo, I think there's tremendous opportunity for our department leads to work with department leads over at the fort to collaborate on some of our initiatives, whether it be procuring items together that we may be able to share or just working just together on some of initiatives. They've been great neighbors. And to continue that, having a consistent meeting with them to keep that communication alive would be great.
Councilman Yates.
I don't want to echo, but yeah, it was phenomenal to share ideas and that we have more in common than we don't. And so it was great to meet everybody and exchange contact information. I've already been in contact with several of them, the folks over there, to work on some projects, so.
Right, I think you promised to coordinate with them about the traffic and.
Right. Communication to traffic and a study we did several years ago, trying to connect, some more connectivity between the two nations.
Yeah, it was a great meeting. So we're looking forward to continuing that a couple of times a year. All right, next we have, this is always a pleasure, recognition of Commissioner Mike Archambault and Roger Owers for their service on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Commissioner Owers was not able to be here today, but Mike is here. Mike Archambault served on the Planning and Zoning Commission from October 2011 until September 2017. Mr. Archambault served two terms as the vice chairman and his last term as chairman. Mr. Archambault was a very valuable member of our Planning and Zoning Commission. Thank you, Mike, for your service to the town. Can you please come up? I have a certificate for you.
As everybody knows, our commissions are voluntary, and they put a lot of work in, especially those on the Planning and Zoning Commission, because they have a lot of work to do, a lot of reading, a lot of studying, a lot of advanced preparation for any kind of issues that come before them. And that their job is very important because whatever their recommendation is and their work is then passed on to us. And many times, it's so helpful to us to have them do a lot of the research before it does get to us. So we're very grateful to anyone and to Mike for sitting on that board. And we wish you good luck with whatever you're doing next. I'm sure there'll be something interesting.
I spent probably the last time or term as the chairman trying to empower my commission so that they all felt that they could run a meeting. And so I tried to give them opportunities. And really, I'm sorry I didn't get a chance to. Bob wouldn't give us any more meetings. I was trying to get some stuff going. But I thoroughly enjoyed working on the commission. We had very good people. And, you know, hopefully, we did our job and we pulled out the information that you guys needed. So you guys can make decisions here at the dais. Thank you, Mayor.
Eric, you can't give it back, otherwise you can't leave. I said you can't give it back, otherwise you can't get off the commission. Thank you, Mike. Let's give Mike a like, round of applause.
And we applaud anybody who serves on our commissions because it does, each and every one of them is very helpful to us, very unique in their own ways. And they do give up a lot of their free time for meetings, for research, for. So if you see a commissioner, don't forget to thank them for their volunteer work as well. Next, we have presentation of the town of Fountain Hills Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2017, by Jennifer Shields, partner with Heinfeld, Meach, and Company. Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, and for the audience's sake, I just want to just say a few words before Ms. Shields gives a brief presentation on the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report that they just completed for the last fiscal year. Each year, and this is a requirement of state law, the town engages an auditing firm to go through and do a thorough check of our finances, double-check and make sure that our checks and balances are in place and that they don't find any irregularities or anything that would be of question. As part of that, they really are, you know, their client is really the mayor and council. As you know, the council has fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers and the community. And so their job is to go through and conduct this audit and then to come back and report any findings that they may have, that they may have found or any deficiencies that they may have found. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Shields, who will give you a brief presentation.
Thank you. Mayor Kavanaugh and members of the council, it's a pleasure to be here again this year. I also have with me Josh Jumper. He's in the audience. He was the audit manager assigned to the project. This is the second year that we have been here for the audit, last year being the first year. So probably, I can attest that it was probably for the finance department a little bit more painful than hopefully this audit was, as we get to know the town and the personnel and the policies that you have in place here. We're here specifically to present the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. I believe you all have a copy of that, probably electronically. And it's over 100 pages of, you know, riveting financial data. I know that most people don't find it so riveting, but it does have a wealth of information in there, including, right from the beginning, there's a letter of transmittal from town management, talking a little bit about the town of Fountain Hills and the things that you have going on here, major initiatives that you're undertaking. There's also management's discussion and analysis, and that gets a little bit more technical, talking about the changes in the financial, you know, the revenues and the expenses that you have here at the town and the relationship and what, you know, the reasons are for the changes. Of course, there's the actual financial statements, which through Finance Office, you receive monthly reports on the budget and where you stand with respect to revenues and expenditures throughout the year. This is just the combination of everything as of the end of the entire fiscal year, also how you did in comparison to your budget. The notes to the financial statements do a very wordy, lengthy discussion, kind of explaining a lot more about the details. And then, of course, inside the CAFR is also the audit opinion. And so that is, those are the two pieces of paper in there that I'm responsible for. And those, you know, I'm happy to report that the town received an unmodified opinion. So that means that we did not find any errors that were material that needed to be corrected. Just by way of other information that's in the CAFR, there is also a bunch of statistical information and schedules at the back, probably about the last 10 to 15 pages. And that provides a nice historical look back at the trends here within the town from a financial perspective. So there's 10 years' worth of data. And that information is also used to do your submissions for continuing disclosure requirements which are required to be done with your bonding covenants. So just to give you a little bit more information about the audit, we come out here two times a year. This year, we came out in August the first time. So we were here for a few days the week of August 7. We were also out here for a little bit longer the week of September 11. So we spent quite a few days with your staff here and happy to report to you that we have no disagreements with management, no uncorrected misstatements that, you know, we needed to report to you. The audit opinion itself is dated October 16. So that's a fairly aggressive timeline. And it means that you have to work really hard from a finance department to make sure that you have all of your books and records closed out. And, you know, because as you know, you spend 60 days after June 30 processing transactions. So it actually is a pretty tight timeline. One of the other things that I will let you know is that, let's see, we did, we're required to do certain communications with council member. One of them is about audit adjustments and whether or not there were any that were not made. There were none. There were no difficulties, like I mentioned, with management or other difficulties encountered in performing the audit. And then also, just to let you know, we have a responsibility as part of the audit to perform audit procedures with respect to fraud. But in the communication that we provided to you, there is a checklist of other types of things that you can look at. Mr. Miller mentioned that one of the things that we do is look at checks and balances. We call those internal controls. And so we do evaluate your internal controls and, you know, evaluate whether or not there are weaknesses. There may have been minor weaknesses that we might have discussed with management, but they didn't rise to the level that needed to be reported to council members. But, you know, we would just encourage you, as Mr. Miller mentioned, you guys have a fiduciary responsibility to the town and its constituents to make sure that there are adequate internal controls in place to prevent any fraud or irregularities or any of those kinds of things. So with the communication, we did include just a few things that, you know, you guys can take back with you and, you know, certainly discuss amongst council members or with management in determining whether or not you want to have any additional reviews performed or that type of thing. So with that, I will ask you if you have any questions.
Questions from councilman Leger?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Shields, thank you for all the work that your firm has performed for us. Much appreciated. I did find a part of your report extremely riveting. And it went to the fact that we had no material errors, which is always good to see. And I think while we're talking about it, you know, we need to really recognize the folks behind all the work, which is our finance staff and our staff, that year after year puts us in a place where we do have a very favorable report from our auditors. So thank you and thank to our staff. Thank you.
I would like to echo my thanks to your staff as well. They do a lot of work for getting ready for the audit.
Councilman Yates?
Thank you, Mayor. Likewise, thank you very much. I know this is very time-consuming anytime you do an audit. If I can ask for your free consultation, or actually, we're paying for this. I know we're a zero-balance budget, but are you seeing any line items that seem a little out of sorts compared to other municipalities our side? I know we don't have several revenue sources. And knowing that over 50% of our revenue comes from sales tax, and I saw your notation in that, is there anything you can share with us that, hey, you're kind of in this range? Anything jump out at you?
Well, unfortunately, we don't do that type of work in connection with the audit. Those are definitely things that could be done. But when it comes to, we do, you know, obviously compare certain things to other municipalities. But really, the audit is focused internally here on Fountain Hills and verifying that the figures that you have here are accurate and that you live within your budgetary constraints, meaning that there is a state-mandated expenditure limitation report that has to be prepared each year. And so you have to stay within, you have to keep your spending within the expenditure limitation. We also did the work with that report as a part of the audit. And you're still within your means. However, you know, I think with the budget, there gets to be a little bit of concern because you budget for maybe longer-term capital projects that, you know, don't have a current revenue source. And so there's a little bit of a reconciliation that has to go on between the budget on, like I said, a longer-term capital basis and the actual financial statements for any given fiscal year.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, anything further? No? Okay, Jennifer, thank you very much. And it was a pleasure to have your staff with us for that short period of time.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. And we have calls to the public. Any speaker cards, Nancy? Nope? Nope, okay. On our consent agenda, we have seven items. Can I get a motion to approve as listed?
Mayor, so moved.
And a second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Is that a, no? Oh, okay. That's coming up. Okay. Regular agenda, consideration of the First Amendment to Cooperative Purchasing Agreement, C. 2017-045, between M.R. Tanna Development and Construction Incorporated in the town of Fountain Hills for asphalt replacement and miscellaneous work in an amount not to exceed $2,500,000. Grady, want to start?
Yes. Mayor and council, I'll keep this brief just to kind of introduce this topic. Originally, this item was on the agenda for council action back in September. And it was tabled as the council had a number of questions that had arisen as to the contract and how we were going to approach future pavement replacement. And so at that point, it made a lot of sense to have a special session or work-study session just on this topic. So we recall, just recently, I believe, last week, we had a session on this for about an hour, hour and a half, going over pavement management and our approach and how we needed to move forward on this. The delay in trying to move forward and not being able to work on this asphalt has set us back some months. And so we're wanting to ask the council consideration of approval of this contract so that we can move forward in trying to do approximately $2.5 million worth of pavement replacement and pavement maintenance. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to our Public Works Director, Justin Weldy, who has a few words to say about this request before you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. As the town manager noted, this contract, along with its exhibits in the area that we intend to work on in, was brought to you not just a short period of time back. And there were some questions in regards to the approach to pavement management. I think that we have answered the majority of those questions, and we will certainly have additional information coming forward as part of a contract that we will present to council very shortly in regards to a pavement assessment. With that said, I don't have any exhibits, and I don't have any maps. I just wanted to explain that there's going to be a little bit of a delay right now because of the cool weather. So if council approves this contract, we would most likely be getting started in February, whenever the temperatures start to climb and the days are a little bit longer. And with that, if you have any questions, I would be glad to answer them.
Any questions for Justin? Any questions?
Mayor Kavanaugh, Councilmember Leger, that is correct.
Yeah, and let me just kind of explain that as well. The council at the last week's meeting, they wanted to drop the zone approach and go to more or less the worst-case scenario. The issue is, a year ago, we communicated, before the council actually discussed this at the retreat, to all the utility companies. And the utility companies take about nine months or so in planning for their replacement. Anytime we do mill and overlay, we need to rip up the streets, and they typically have to relocate their plant. And so the problem is, for the duration of this year, for us to have them, say, do like the horse streets that we talked about, or some of the other streets that are failing us, we would not be able to get to those streets because it will take about six to nine months of them having to do some engineering work. And that would just set us further behind. So with that, staff recommends approval of this contract tonight.
Have any speaker cards? Nope. Any other council discussion? If not, you need a motion?
So moved. Mayor, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
You can hear me now.
Yes, Vice Mayor, I can hear you.
I think I had some technical problems. I had two questions from Ms. Shields. Is she still there or has she left?
She's still here.
I wonder if I could quickly ask her two questions?
Sure. Go ahead.
Given our difficult financial picture, do you see any potential problems with our bond rating, number one? And number two, what kinds of conditions might affect our bond rating in the future?
Oh, gosh. That might be a question better asked of the financial underwriters and financial advisors. What we have seen in the past is that they still focus, for the most part, on the available fund balance and the ability to generate a property tax in order to pay debt. But it depends upon the type of debt that you would potentially be looking for. If you're looking for a revenue-type debt, then, of course, you need to raise the revenue from which a debt would be paid. And how that relates to a bond rating would be, obviously, when you are looking to issue debt, your bond rating plays a big piece of it because of the, the rating has a correlation to the pricing when you go to market. But again, that's a little bit out of my area of expertise. I don't know if perhaps Craig, Mr. Rodolphy, has anything more that he might add from a management standpoint.
You mentioned property tax, and I didn't quite follow that.
Well, if you issue a debt that, there's two types of debt that you can issue. You can issue a debt that's against, like a property tax. You have a voter override for a general obligation debt. The town has had some type of, has debt that is funded that way, not just from a general property tax, but it would have to be a tax assessed on a specific type of, no matter what. It's a specific type of tax that's being assessed against how you're going to pay the debt that you wish to issue. So if you are looking to do that type of a transaction, like I said, that's where your rating comes into play. You know, you have current debt that's outstanding that, you know, obviously, you're going to, you're still paying on that debt with whatever revenue source you had previously agreed to. But that has, you know, the rating that you have doesn't necessarily relate to that unless you're doing a new issuance because the, you know, your principal and interest payments are already set on those prior debt issuances.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Before we, okay, so did you get the vote on that? Okay. Before we go on to number nine, I apologize. I was remiss in not introducing our attorney sitting next to Grady. Mr. Mitesh Patel is with us today.
Thank you.
Okay. Consideration of Resolution 2017-47, ordering a calling of special election to be held on May 15, 2018, for the purpose of submitting to the qualified electors of the town of Fountain Hills the question of levying a primary property tax in the amount not to exceed $7 million. Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, and for the audience who are here tonight. Recall that at the October 10 special session, it was a culmination of a couple of years of the council reviewing and discussing a pending revenue shortfall that we have been projecting for the last several years. And the council at the October 10 meeting, after having studied and evaluated a number of different. of different potential revenue sources and also expenditure reduction options, opted unanimously to go forward with a $7 million primary property tax levy. We have a brief presentation on that tonight. Our finance director will go through that, but I just have a few comments that I'd like to make before we get into the presentation. In Arizona, we're unique in that a number of cities throughout the state really rely on sales tax. Sales tax is the primary generator of the general fund. And so unfortunately, when you have downturns in the economy, you really notice that the revenues just are not able to keep up. That actually, people stop spending, and therefore, we start collecting less sales tax. Our situation's a little bit unique in Fountain Hills in that we are now finally back to the level that we were prior to the downturn in the economy in 2008 with respect to state shared revenue and also with sales tax. However, they're just about at the same level. Maybe sales tax is about $300,000 or $400,000 higher than it was prior to the downturn in the economy. But the state shared revenue is about the same, even though it has climbed and it has grown. Our slice of that pie, even though that pie has gotten bigger, our slice has gotten smaller as other communities around have grown. And for us to get a larger slice, we would really have to be growing at 10% or more in that same time period. So the issue is, we went through, back in a couple of times, went through and did some major budget reductions. We went through, and we had, at one point, 115 employees on staff, and that was reduced down to about 55 today. And we also did a number of contracting out services. We have a number of services, such as all of our landscape and right-of-way maintenance with vegetation and landscaping in the parks and the grounds here, and a number of other services have been contracted out. Well, all those services initially provided us savings, but over time, those savings have been eroded to the point where, you know, we're not saving any money anymore off those. So we're at a point where we've really have done all the hard work in the early years by reducing serious costs, but what's happened is the revenue is just not keeping up. And then we also have contracts, speaking of contracts, with public safety, that you can always count on those always going up, generally at a higher rate of increase than what the rest of the general fund is going up. So as a result, police and fire are now consuming more than 50% of the overall general fund budget. So back in October 10, the council unanimously decided to do, after having evaluated everything from a public safety fee, increase in the sales tax, establishing a fire district, and even other cuts, they determined that the most viable, equitable, and sustainable revenue option out there was a primary property tax. I want to just remind everybody, too, that in the valley here and also elsewhere in the state, the majority of the full-service communities, basically, in order to provide services to their communities, have to have a primary property tax. I shouldn't say have to, but have primary property taxes. Those that do not have something unique about their cities, as an example, City of Mesa, they have a utility enterprise. So like, electricity, gas are provided by the City of Mesa, and they have a sales tax on that that generates what would be the equivalent of what property tax would be generated. A unique community that's smaller than Fountain Hills is Paradise Valley, and Paradise Valley has a very well-developed tourism industry where they have a number of resorts and hotels. They get a lot of bed tax and food and beverage tax on those activities. So with that, I'll go ahead and have Craig come up to the dais, but I do want to remind the council that what the council agreed to, that if this were to pass at a special election in May, that the council would eliminate the annual environmental fee, which has been really a very negative thing in the community, and a lot of people have really expressed concern about. So that would be one of the pluses. The other thing is, most of the funding for this will go towards streets, which, as everybody knows in the community, our streets are really in horrible condition. And also for public safety, ensuring that those contracts that go up every year, that we'll have money always available for public safety, which is the top priority of this council, and then also allow us to avoid, basically, a revenue shortfall in the future. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Rudolphy, our finance director, who has a brief presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Several, majority of these slides you've seen before, but just as a matter of refresher and for the audience, we will go through them. These are our major expense drivers. As we all know, public safety is one of them, pavement maintenance is another, funding our facilities and maintaining them is yet another, and then with the development of the state trust land, we're looking at the opening of another fire station. So all three of those, four of those items are going to put a major strain on the town's operating budget. This is our 10-year projection based on expenditures remaining the same, meaning do what we're now doing going forward. As you can see, in fiscal '17, '18, the year we're in, we're very close, but that gap widens over time. Another chart showing, the orange and the green lines are the current operating, do nothing, I'm sorry, not do nothing, do the same as we've been doing. And then we asked staff, department directors, to indicate what would be needed if we were able to work with the town and fund the things that we believe the citizens want, desire. That's the red bars and the blue revenue line. And as you can see, the red bars greatly outnumber the blue revenue. This is just a recap of the 10 years, showing our average projection over that, over the next 10-year period, to be a deficit of 6.4 million. That's not each year. Next year, we're at a short, small discrepancy, but that will grow and change over time, some years being larger than others. But over the 10-year period, the average would be 6.4 million. This chart I found in some old presentations that the town had done back in 2007. And if you look, the end of the middle arrow for fiscal year '13 and '18 pretty much shows what my previous chart showed. And back in 2007, they were still projecting that as we go forward, we are going to be in a deficit position. So we are now trying to address that position. Here's some of the things the town manager mentioned that we considered in previous council meetings. The local sale tax, the public safety fee, the primary property tax, special districts, franchise fees, the town fees, and we also looked at the possibility of reducing our expenditures and level of service.
Okay.
So at October 10, council voted to approve a primary property tax in the amount of $7 million. And this primary property tax, we feel, staff feels, has the following advantages: viable, equitable, and sustainable. State law limits the amount of the property tax increases to a maximum of 2% per year. The collection and the collection rate are done by the county. Our current collection rate for our secondary property taxes is in excess of 99%. And based on current tax law, the tax for property is deductible versus a fee which is non-deductible. The primary property tax, assessed valuation can increase a maximum of 5% per year. So I showed the current year and the prior year figures, which was 5% lower. As I stated on the previous slide, the maximum amount that the property tax can increase is 2%, contrasted to the 5% in the valuation. And then assuming a $7 million property tax, this is the impact on the home values. Those are the assessed values, not the sale price, but what the assessor considers the assessed value for the home.
And Craig, just, I looked at mine the other day, and versus what the market value was of my home, it was roughly 25% less. So in other words, what is, what I would be paying, so if you look at your chart, you know, it'd be like, maybe 75% of, you know, one of those numbers there is what I'm trying to say. So it's, people, unfortunately, I think they look at the market value, and it's really, truly not the market value. It's the, what would you call that, when they look on their?
Assessed valuation.
It's the assessed valuation.
And typically, according to the assessor's office, it is roughly 80% of what people think their home is worth. So it's not what, gee, I just sold my house, I sold it for $500,000, so that's what the tax is that I'm going to pay. It's what the assessor feels that the home is valued at, which is typically 80% of that $500,000 number. So it'd be like a $430,000 or $400,000 valuation.
And people can go online and check that?
Yes, everyone, the assessor's office, if you have your address or your parcel number, you can look up your own property, and it will give you what the assessed valuation for the current year and the prior year is.
Okay.
And we, as on this slide, we do intend to develop a public information plan and hold meetings. During that time, we will educate the citizens how they can look up their own valuation on the assessor's office site. We'll also have a calculator that people can use that will be on our website, that they can use to calculate the estimated tax based on their assessed valuation. We're going to do, we're going to prepare frequently asked questions, hopefully addressing most of the concerns that the residents would have. By law, we have to publish and distribute a publicity pamphlet that will contain pros and cons for people that write in. We're going to coordinate with the elections office, the assessor's office, as well as the treasurer's office, and then we plan to hold a special all-mail ballot in, on May 15 in 2018.
Yeah, and I think that's all really important, because I know that some people were very confused about that, especially people that bought their homes before the downturn, and they said, wow, I bought my home, and it was, I had to pay this much, and now it's not worth that much. How, it's, you know, and then they're going on that price that they paid for their home, you know, 10 years ago, and it's different now. So I think it's really important, if we do get that on our website and get some information, so people could realistically look at what they would have to pay.
Yeah, and it's our intention for the public information meetings, to hold them during the daytime and in the evenings and on different days of the week and at different locations to make it as readily available to the public as we can.
That's great.
To the mayor's point, too, I just want to remind the public here and the council, we've talked about this in previous council meetings on this subject, but the, there are programs that people can apply for through the state, like widow and widower exemptions and veterans.
There's also senior valuation.
Senior valuations, that puts a cap on your home value and such. So there are programs out there that the county, is it the assessor's office or the treasurer's office?
I believe it's the treasurer's office.
That they can apply for, and so there are some protections there for some people that might be on limited, you know, incomes that they can actually apply for that will help them and provide some assistance.
That's great. And if we could add that information also?
We'll definitely do that.
I think that would be great. Thank you for adding that. Councilmember Porter?
So I think it's great, the public information plan. Do you have any idea when you think we'll start, start that process?
We're going to start the, the planning process as soon, or if the council approves the resolution this evening. We don't want to hold it too much in advance. My guess is, we'll have a, we will come back to council with an outline and a schedule for those meetings. I would think they would probably start maybe in January, no later than February.
And Mayor and Council, you're aware, we just are sending out later this week, for the first time, a, a community newsletter. It'll be a quarterly newsletter, and we just missed the deadline for this particular topic. But if the council approves this tonight, we will be ready to go on the end of January, and that's going to hit every household, and we'll have a lot of the public information that everyone will have questions about this. And so that will go out, we're going to probably have a postcard that will go out that has the dates of all these different meetings. So we're going to do everything we can to make sure that people are aware of this and can get the answers to their questions they may have.
I'm wondering if, just a couple more questions, if there's any opportunity to work with some of our, our partners in COC, CenturyLink, and others to maybe serve as just, not for them to promote the property tax on our behalf or for anyone's behalf, but just more to send out information pointing back to where the factual information is.
That's a good, that's a good point, and we could certainly have the conversations with them. That's a great idea.
Republic Services has been a good partner of ours and so on. And then secondly, you were mentioning all avenues to get to people. If we could also just entertain the idea of doing webinar or video conference, something that we can store. I don't know if you heard of the Fountain Hills Connection, but it's a hot place for news. But other places on social media are places where you could go and just archive something and we could point people back to something where FAQ's are going on and so.
We've actually have talked, there's a, a local company that has actually helped produce the videos that the council has seen from, on tourism and also economic development. And so it would not be one that's advocating for this by any means. It would only be trying to help, help communicate this and help people, like, try to find what their assessed valuation would be and have them kind of figure out what kind of impact this might have on them, and then also kind of direct them to other information resources. So we are definitely got that in the cards.
Councilmember Yext?
Just some metrics. We did a study on the sales tax. No, we're not the lowest in the whole county, but of the East Valley, we're the highest sales tax, which was taken consideration. And to put it into metrics, if you take $7 million divided by approximately 15,000 lots, comes to $467. In actuality, I think we're more like 15,200 lots. Anyway, about $400 a year on average. It's a little over a dollar a day, just to kind of put that in perspective.
Good point.
Thank you.
Speaker cards?
Mayor?
Councilman Tollis?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to recognize town manager Grady Miller and our finance director, and really our entire council. I think that the public, I hope, understands that for the last 10 months, we have been working to try to come up with solutions, try to address this issue long-term, and we've talked about ways to possibly increase sales tax revenues with some sort of a regional draw, things of that nature. And it seems to me that the public has spoken, that they really want us to maintain the rural, keep our streets as, as less active as possible. I think you had mentioned in the beginning of our meeting in regards to tourism and the issues that Sedona's having and some of the other communities, that this is, this is the solution that it seems to make the most sense, that will allow our community to maintain the charm and the character that, that it seems that the people have spoken that they want. So I just want to recognize the staff for everything they've done, and really, all that I've learned in this process to really determine how can we maintain what this community is really desiring and maintaining streets and maintaining the infrastructure as necessary. So I think we're on the right path, and, and I think the education process is really critical. I'd like town manager Grady to address some of those other options that we discussed and why we weren't able to move forward with, one, specifically, the public safety district, things of that nature. There's been already some efforts by, by some, some within the community to question why we're moving forward in the way we are, and I just think it's important for public record to start and address that tonight, at least to begin that education process of why we did not move forward in that direction.
Sure. Councilmember Tollis, I will be happy to do that. As an example, I know recently there was a discussion about the possibility of a public safety fee. The council looked at this very seriously, and there's, there are some downsides to it. One is, under state law, you can only have a fixed fee that every- Um, one is under state law, you can only have, um, a fixed fee that everybody pays the same amount. So imagine, if you will, that maybe, um, Target on Shea would pay, say, six hundred dollars a month or five hundred dollars a month, the same as, say, a, a small condo, um, would, or a small business in town. There's really a lot of inequity in that. We also have an issue, um, what we're seeing with the collection of the environmental fee, we, we have probably close to like a, I don't know, would you say it's eighty-five percent collection rate?
Ninety percent.
There are some people that are refusing to pay it and it's very difficult for us to collect it. So the ease of collection for a fee is just not there, it's also inequitable because people of all different, um, uh, income levels are paying the same right, so, or the same fee. We looked at the special district option and, you know, we once had a, a fire district here in town and there was quite a bit of divisiveness, um, in the community to go ahead and, and take fire over in the fire services. We looked at having a community facilities district that would cover the entire community. And while we felt that the state law would have, was somewhat silent and we could have probably worked on it, we believe that we would have had it probably be challenged by, um, you know, one of these, uh, watchdog, tax walk, watchdogs. And so that was something that we, um, really did not really want to, uh, pursue further.
Madam Mayor, if I could, just because of the community facility district.
Yeah, you were really involved in that too.
Yeah, I did an extensive study on this, met with attorneys, uh, um, the league, uh, other municipalities. The community facilities district is structured more so for, uh, master plan communities that you start that up. Just the logistics alone, the legal backing made absolutely no sense. I mean, it would be extremely costly just to enact such a thing on top of the fact that it could have been challenged. It was neat on paper the way it read because you can specify how you wanted to use these funds, but the reality is, uh, zero balance budget, the way we utilize the, the funds can, in essence, that we're going in, yeah, they're going in the general fund, but there's, we have seven line item, more or less, of, of what we're gonna use this for, this just really does. I was hoping the community facilities district, because I was, it was so close, but it's, logistically makes no sense at, at all, too costly.
The, the other thing we looked at was increasing the, um, the, the local sales tax, and my understanding, each, um, tenth of a percent of, of sales tax generates about three hundred and forty thousand. So for us to generate seven million, there's this, you, it would be crazy. We would have to really have such a high sales tax rate that would hurt the businesses here in town. Um, people already, there's a lot of leakage of people going down the hill to Scottsdale to shop and dine. So it, it, we, the council realized early on that that is just something that wasn't a, a real possibility. And I'm wondering, Art, am I missing, um, any other?
No, except I'll just add that a lot of people, um, look at Charter City and they look at what a Charter City can do versus what we can do, and they think that we can do the same thing.
Good point.
But we can't, so.
Right, yeah, we have to, um, as a general law city or town, we actually, um, are, we have less discretion, um, because we don't have a charter. A charter's like a, a constitution or a bylaws, and, um, really, we fall more into the state as a political subdivision of the state. But anyways, what?
I appreciate, I re-
Oh, go ahead, Councilmember Tollis.
I, I, I appreciate, I appreciate your response and, and, and I'm aware of all these issues and as, as all the rest of the council is, I just wanted to make sure we had this on, uh, in, in a public forum, that it was explained and as we move forward, that this part of the education, uh, for our community is known. And I think it also needs to be recognized how hard the staff worked in regards to the development project with Copperwind and looking at all of the other revenue sources that we have, which the bed tax and Copperwind and, and hopefully that will come to fruition within the next three to five years, which will add revenues to our community. But there's only so much we can do as a community in Fountain Hills, uh, and this is an option that, as, uh, as our finance director indicated, is something that is, uh, a long-term solution that, uh, is, is necessary at this time.
Okay, and Craig, thank you and your staff for working so long on this. I know you've been at it for a long time.
My pleasure.
Okay. And he also, sitting there, thank you. Um, we have speaker cards on this, right?
Yes, Mayor, we have one, um, resident who does not wish to speak but is in support of the property tax.
And could you tell us the name of that resident?
Kimberly Bartman.
Okay.
And then we have Mr. Jim Judge, who wishes to speak.
Madam Mayor, council.
Welcome, Jim.
Members, Town Manager, thank you. My name is Jim Judge, I own my own in Fountain Hills and I live here for over fourteen years. And I'm here tonight to encourage you to approve placing the primary property tax on the May two thousand eighteen ballot for voter approval. No one wants to pay more taxes, but if we do, we want value for our money. And I believe there's no better value than investing in our town. The most common words I hear, and I'm sure most of you have heard the same, is, "I love living in Fountain Hills." It's just universal. And I know many of you or all of you know, uh, what I'm about to share, some other comments, but others may not be as, as informed. Our town is facing an income deficit of six point four million dollars for two thousand eighteen and will continue not having enough revenue to meet expenses in the six and a half to seven million dollar range every year for the next ten years. Our police and fire emergency services require over fifty percent of our operating fund each year and continues to go up. To reduce costs, Town Staff has reduced well over half of its employees that we had just two to three years ago. We have tried bringing in enough new business and tourism to meet our needs, but no matter how much effort put forward, it's not nearly enough to maintain our town in the way we want it preserved. Compared to the Midwest, where I paid property taxes for many years, I consider Arizona as a bargain. Uh, I, I really do, it's, it's incredible difference. I know we all have to, uh, the citizens of Fountain Hills, we all have a responsibility to meet the financial needs of our, of our town. And with that, I thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Jim. Anybody else, Nance?
Amber Lee Dubrowski.
Good evening. Hello, Madam Mayor, Count Vice Mayor on the phone, um, Town Manager and other council members. I'm Amber Lee Dubrowski, I've been a Fountain Hills resident of over five years now, and I want to start with, I am very thankful to live in this community. I believe it's a beautiful community and I know from participating in all of these meetings for almost two years now, it's something worth being thankful for. But I am concerned that we have a bit of a champagne taste with a dwindling beer budget. And what I want to make sure that we move forward with, and I'm hopeful that there will be straw, a strong educational effort, and I'm really glad to hear that in Mr. Rudolphy's presentation as well as what Mr. Grady spoke to today. But that's essential for helping the residents like me and others out there in understanding certain points that I want to touch on. The first would be, how we got here. How we got here, learning about the history and making sure we don't repeat it. What does this mean for me as a resident? I know you spoke about the exemptions and the programs that are available, we need to really communicate that with those that have fixed incomes. You know, it's hard for them to realize, okay, so it may be fifty dollars a month, but that, that can be their food budget, it's very important. And overall, I want to make sure that there is transparency, where the dollars are needed, how they will be prioritized, and where they will be committed. I think that's really important for the public to understand so that they can support. You all see what your streets look like and how they can improve. We want to see, if you're gonna tax me, I want to get like the gentleman before me, the value out of it. I think that's essential, to do that through the educational process so that we're spreading and communicating the correct information, so that way that we have residents that are informed for the vote. Lastly, I just want to say I hope to see you all at Turkey Trot and have a great Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. I think, um, Mr. Dubrowski brings out a good point too, that we, we also need to reach out to, we, we have, um, access to, uh, lists of people through Senior Services, through Extended Hands Food Bank, through lots of other sources, SRP, uh, that we need to also reach out to people who we know will probably be, um, in trouble with this, uh, the property tax and, and paying the amount, because we certainly, we certainly, as Mr. Dubrowski said, we certainly don't want someone giving up food or medicine or something like that to have to, have to pay taxes if they can't afford it. And those organizations, um, are the ones that, that, um, do the research and have the list of those people that, uh, qualify.
We will definitely try to keep in touch with people and, and try to identify the folks that will be in need, um, of these services that I mentioned earlier.
Mm-hmm, okay. Anyone else? No, okay. Uh, any further council discussion? If not, I'm looking for a motion.
So moved.
Need a second? And all, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, okay, motion carries. All right, we have no direction to the Town Manager, but we do have, at this point, we discuss, um, requests or activities that anyone wants to talk about. Um, if you want to leave, leave quietly, we're not done. Okay, I'm gonna first go to Councilman Cecil Yates, and he is going to update us on the Veterans Day event in town and the Leadership Academy.
Nice, thank you, Mayor. Uh, very busy, uh, early part of the month, uh, November tenth, in seventeen seventy-five was the birth of the United States Marines, so I want to say happy birthday Marines, two hundred and forty-two years. Um, and then the next day, uh, was Veterans Day. And the VFW, the, uh, American Legion Post Fifty-Eight, AMVets Post Seven, and Marine Corps League Detachment fourteen thirty-nine hosted our Veterans Day event at our Veterans Memorial, um, at the, uh, park. It was great, well attended, lasted about half hour, forty-five minutes, the weather was tremendous. Um, that's an exciting, uh, event. What's really neat is, and Mayor, remind me, who was the nonprofit that donated? We're now gonna have, well, we already have a stage now, which makes it easier to see, but we're also gonna have, um, some, uh, cover in the future. And, uh, I, please excuse me, I couldn't remember the-
That was, uh, uh, Senior Services?
That's right, Senior Services donated that, that was very well received. Um, and probably one of the neatest thing, although I've been semi-involved, then Councilman Tollis chime in, but the second graduating class of the Leadership Academy happened on November ninth, what a fun event, these guys are go-getters. Um, there are already leaders in the community, but it's neat, they, uh, the Fountain Hills Cultural and Civic Association, um, it's an eight-week course, taught, teaching about Fountain Hills, Fort McDowell, the sanitary district, public safety, the chamber, the schools. Um, and then they have a final project where they have to kind of promote an idea, and I'll be bringing this to council, maybe have them present or at least, uh, uh, share with them, some of the ideas were very tremendous. And then I just wanted to note the graduates, Scott Summer, Don Harville, Cynthia Magazine, who is the Vice Mayor's wife, uh, Amy Arnold, Kim Robertson, Lisa Murray, Kim Cammons, Brent Krujshank, Tom Lindsay, Mark Dirkson, Anita Glennister, Bonnie Hallabow, um, Hallabow, sorry, Natalie Hogaboom, and Kim Widner. Um, just a great event, and if you see these folks, go to FHCCA.org, check that out if you haven't already attended this, uh, they're now accepting applicants for the next class, it'd be tremendous, uh, experience. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, um, I have a couple of things. I represented our town and our sister cities at the Polish Heritage Event. As you know, we have a sister city in Poland and have exchange students visiting from Zamosch and Fountain Hills students have traveled to Poland. Um, I also had a great time speaking to the wonderful, attentive, and very animated audience, the third grade class at McTown Mountain School. Um, I talked to them all about our town and how it's run and what it's like to be a mayor. They got to ask me lots of questions, they seemed to ask me a lot of questions about spiders, I don't know why, but it's a good thing I knew a lot about spiders. And on behalf of the town, I gave them all, um, Fountain Hills Experience bracelets and pens and stickers, um, and, um, I have to tell you that they were just awesome students, the teachers, the principal was there, um, superintendent showed up briefly to say hello and to be with the students, and they have parent volunteers there, it was really a great experience. I, I had a lot of fun, I love being around the kids. Um, I attended a chamber breakfast, uh, there was business community heard an update on Copperwind, we, we just mentioned that earlier, uh, the expansion, Bill Hines, the owner, presented that, and there's lots of interest from our business community in that project. As, um, Mr. Dubrowski already mentioned, Turkey Trot is Thursday morning, okay, so if, if you're in the mood for a run or a walk, okay, we're all ready for you. And then we have, of course, the Thanksgiving Parade that kicks off at nine o'clock. Now, if you haven't been to the community center lately, you gotta stop in because all the trees are up, all the groups and organizations have put together their trees, the lobby looks beautiful, and I want to thank all the volunteers who showed up early on that Saturday morning to do that for us. And if you haven't seen our new town Christmas tree, it's at the end of the Avenue Media near the clock, you can't miss it, it's beautifully decorated and all lit, lit up at night, and it's a great photo op, right? Especially if you have kids. Um, and besides Christmas, uh, if you're looking for, where's our giant menorah, that's gonna go up on Tuesday, December twelfth at five o'clock to begin the celebration of Hanukkah. So let me also remind you that Breakfast with Santa and our community center, center activities will be on Saturday, December second. That evening, starting at five o'clock, will be the annual Chamber of Commerce Stroll in the Glow on the Avenue. Santa will arrive, as always, on the fire truck and visit with the kids. You can always check the town calendar for all of these events and information. And that's it, on behalf of the Town Council, have a wonderful, safe, and a blessed Thanksgiving. Anyone have anything else before I call for an adjournment? Okay, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?